All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call the one on Tuesday. I was going to say Monday. Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, Board of Commissioners meeting to order this evening for the invocation and pledge. I will turn it over to Mr. Beaumont to handle that for us.
Well, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this gathering this evening, for the ability and the opportunity to come together as Keratuck County's government. I think it was wisdom as we hear as you debate the case before us were, but it was clear understanding of what's best for our community. In addition to that, Lord, we sit here with an upcoming, oncoming hurricane, and Lord, I ask that you give everybody the wisdom to get out of its path. Father, those that choose to ignore the warning would stay. Father, we ask that you would protect them. But first and foremost, Lord, I ask that you would protect all of the first responders, for their job is to stay here and protect the community as best they can, Father. They are diligent in what they do. I pray that you would protect them and keep them safe. In Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Beaumont? All right. Do we have any changes for the agenda tonight? Or is on the floor for a motion for approval?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda this evening is public comment. Huge audience. Hopefully, people are watching out there. You'll notice we're white. One Commissioner Knight, Commissioner Owen Etheridge is out working the fields, trying to get the corn up before the hurricanes. So wishing him well in his endeavors. I was going to say something about the new monitors to all the people in the crowd, but you guys already know about that. So thank you to the staff for getting those put up. We'll be able to see stuff a lot better. As most of you know, we have an 8:00 AM evacuation for residents and our visitors alike, starting tomorrow morning. It's Wednesday. Dare will be closing the bridge at some point in the near future, and it depends on what the wind strength is. So pay attention to that when there's tropical, tropical storm force winds. Get to that point. That is when they are supposed to close the bridge. So if you're coming back after the storm or during the next day or two, as we are doing that, just make sure you have your ID with you. If you don't have a reentry permit, a driver's license, tax form, or any kind of power utility bill should do the job to prove that you, as long as your name is on it, to prove that you are an owner slash resident in Keratuck County and allow you to get through to access, except when they close the road down or bridge down due to those high winds. After the storm, we will make an announcement as soon as we know when they open the bridge back up. So please stay tuned to our website, and we'll have as much up-to-date information as we can for you out there. And lastly, or a couple other things. I know in Corolla, we're used to, and in Keratuck County in general, we're used to dealing with hurricanes. We seem to get them quite often, and over the last 20 years or so that I've been here, they seem to come more and more frequently. But I would urge people not to get complacent. As Commissioner Beaumont said during his prayer, you know, think about getting out. Think about your life, your health, your safety, or your family. And don't become complacent. We can get used to this stuff, and it could catch you off guard. And so I would just ask that you think about that. If you don't need to be here, take a little vacation and get away. While you're doing that, please take a minute to clean up your yards. For those of you that are in these high-wind areas, anything out there can become projectile. And so it's a good time to do a little cleanup around the house, the yard. Make sure your hot tub covers are strapped down. There's nothing like a 50-pound hot tub cover moving through the air to do some damage. And I've seen it happen. So please take a moment to take care of stuff at your pool deck as well. The current prediction, or it's gusts well over 60 miles an hour for this hurricane as it passes by. And the track has moved it a little bit closer as our latest weather briefing to the Outer Banks area, and we couldn't see increased winds if it comes closer still. And Corolla and Whalehead in particular, trash pickup will be, will take place tomorrow as scheduled on Wednesday. However, it will be suspended on Saturday. So don't look for that to happen until the following Wednesday. Something new for this year that we're doing is we're moving pumps in and prepositioning them. We have not done that in the past, and Ben came up with that, and I applaud him for thinking that. We have five pumps coming into Corolla, with four of which are going to go into Ocean Sands and one in Whalehead to help get the water out of there as quickly as we can if need be. We have the pumps up and running in Whalehead, I believe as we speak, to lower the groundwater ahead of the storm to help deal with some of the water coming in ahead of time. I think that was all I had for the storm. So that's it. If you do remain, I wish everybody well and hope there's not much property damage. Turn it over to you, sir.
Oh, thank you. Again, just the only thing I want to talk about was a storm coming, and we're going to get an update a little later from our emergency management director on the storm and the latest updates. But if you lived here and you've been through the storm, there's areas that are going to flood, you know, the south end of the county, Walnut Island. You knew what happened a few years ago with the flooding. So take heed. Watch the updates. Watch the county's website. We're going to be putting updates on there. And you know what's going to flood, you know. Take precautions. And if you're told to get out, evacuate. Just get to a safer place. You know, first responders will be out when they can. If it gets, conditions get too bad, they're not going to be able to get on the streets. So just remember that until the conditions allow them to get out. So just again, just be careful out there. I know we, you can call the county if you need some assistance. I believe you can. We'll get some more updates on the manager's report. But again, just be safe out there. Just get prepared. And again, just be safe. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Etheridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last night, while I was watching one of my favorite TV programs, Jeopardy, the question was, what renowned author wrote the bestselling book, Leadership in Turbulent Times? And the answer was one of our general session speakers at our state county commissioners conference last month in Greensboro, Doris Goodwin. This is the caliber of people who attend these conferences, and we were very fortunate to be able to go. Commissioner Jarvis, Commissioner Etheridge, County Manager, and myself had the opportunity to attend sessions on law, economic development, ethics, corruption, the 2020 census, supporting our children, opioid epidemic, cyber attacks, Medicaid transformation, and the list goes on and on and on. It was a three-day workshop of learning and sharing with other fellow colleagues. And we certainly hope that some of these things that we learned that we can put in practice here in Keratuck County and maybe in the months to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beaumont?
Nothing to add this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner McCord?
Just remember, with the upcoming storm coming up, report any downed power lines to dispatch. I mean, you can pretty much, when the storm time and everything, you can call 911. If you think something's not 911-callable, 232-2424. Always give that number for dispatch. They're open 24 hours a day. I always say they're open 24 hours a day, twice. You don't forget 24. So that's a non-emergency. Make sure you bring your pets inside and all that good stuff. I wrote down a bunch of notes. And like I said, if you're staying, make sure you got plenty of supplies. And if you need help, you know, call 911. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jarvis?
As Commissioner Etheridge mentioned, I had the pleasure of going to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Convention in Greensboro with hundreds of other representatives. And it was an incredible learning event. She mentioned some of the workshops that we attended and had the opportunity. But two that I attended, I didn't have a lot of expectations going in, but they blew me away. The first one was on embezzlement. And we started out by watching a very fascinating documentary about the largest case of embezzlement by a local government employee. She stole over $50 million over 20 years. And after the documentary, there was a great discussion about how you prevent those kinds of even small-scale embezzlement from happening. And it was fascinating about something I had no idea had happened in a small town in Illinois. The other one was on cyber attacks and malware issues. And we started that workshop with counties around us talking about their problems that they've had with cyber attacks. You think that doesn't happen in North Carolina, especially in areas like Hurford County, but they have been victims as well. And so it was such a learning experience. I shared with our county manager the free websites and the free different ways that the federal government assists counties with making sure that they don't become victims of cyber attack and malware issues. So this is the type of information that we really gleaned from these workshops. It was incredible. I invite you to go to Netflix if you haven't and watch All the Queen's Horses about this case of embezzlement. It might sound dry, but it was fascinating how this woman was able to pull that off for 20 years. The last thing I have is, this afternoon, I received an update from Bland Baker from Trillium, that the Medicaid transformation has been postponed for the entire state due to the continuing budget stalemate. All 100 counties now will transition on February 1st, 2020. And the open enrollment date now for all 100 counties is December 13th, 2019. And more information I will provide, we meet, Trillium meets next week, and I will pass this information on to the appropriate people in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is County Manager's report. Mrs. Stikele?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, a lot of the focus today has been on the upcoming hurricane and the preparations that we're making. We have staged emergency personnel are going to work to have more personnel in the Outer Banks and on the mainland. We're going to actually double the presence that we have on the Outer Banks from a law enforcement standpoint. We're going to double the crews that we have in Corova, just in case those places become isolated because of water over the roads. We are, for folks out there that have questions or concerns, they, the number that they can reach out to first is 232-2115. We're setting up a call center there so folks can call in. That's for residents. We're also visitors as we get past the storm. Because of the timing of this, we're going to have folks who are coming here Saturday, and we're going to want to know about when we're going to reopen. I do not anticipate that occurring on Saturday at this time. We will get further information about county offices. They will be open to schedule tomorrow. We'll make a determination after tomorrow's weather briefing as to what we're going to do Thursday. At this time, I'd like to turn it over actually to our emergency management director, Marybeth Noons. She's going to go over just quickly the 5 o'clock weather update and what it did to the model, how it changed just a little. But even these slight changes can make a rather large difference at this point in the game. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking me to come up and speak today. I wanted to let you know that there was a little bit of change, but not a lot of change to the, between the 2 o'clock and the 5 o'clock. And actually, if you look back at the prior forecast, there's not much difference going back even further. And to be quite honest, it's making us a little nervous. It's kind of telling us they might not be as sure as they are trying to present. So there's a, not a high level of confidence that we have in this as far as how much rain we're going to receive and how long the winds are going to blow. So one of the things that changed between the 2 o'clock and the 5 o'clock is the length that the storm will be here. So two days ago, we were looking at a fairly quick moving storm, the highest of the winds coming in very early Friday morning and being done by 10 o'clock in the morning, and the rest of the day being beautiful. However, now it has stretched out. It is, the winds are going to start moving in Thursday evening, late evening, and it's going to go through till mid-afternoon on Sa, oh, I'm sorry, Friday. So it is slowing down a little bit once it comes up our coast and makes that turn. Some of the uncertainty with the rain is the bands that come with this. And I'm sure most of you are aware of the bands that can move across and dump a whole lot of rain in one particular location. So we're keeping a close eye on those. They're very hard for our forecasters to predict, so we just need to be ready. And that was one of the reasons for having the pumps ready. And I thank you all for your support. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I don't have a question, but I would like to add one thing, just to let everybody know. If you're on Knott's Island, or if you're in Corolla, or Corova, or Grandy, or whatever, today, a lot of the admin staff, as well as some of the specialty units for the Sheriff's Department have, we have SUVs everywhere. So we can get to anybody out there. So I mean, just, I want the citizens to know that. So that was something we'd done. That was on my list that I forgot to say. Sorry.
Can you give us that number again for the call center?
Sure. It's, I was just going to do that. Thank you. The number is 252, of course, 232-2115. That's the emergency management number. And we've opened that up to a call center so that we have several callers during regular business hours. I want to point that out. I do have a detailed message on there to help people with some of the questions that they've been calling in with. So hopefully, that message, if they call in, will answer what they need. I would like to also encourage or discourage people from calling our non-emergency line for evacuation or reentry questions. Please go ahead and call the emergency management number.
I don't have a question, but I would like to say I've seen how y'all work in the past and worked the telephones before, and y'all do a fabulous job. And nobody realizes how many hours y'all put in to help the citizens here in Keratuck, and we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bitter to that.
Yeah, well, just one last comment. I did have the opportunity to sit, I believe it was last year, so there's some EOC training and observe the county. And I mean, it was very impressive. The county has got a great EOC plan in place. I just want everybody to know that it'll be manned, staffed, and it's phenomenal to be, to support our county. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you. It's always nice to see how our county comes together and really, really gets this community through difficult times. Anything else?
No. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
So as the citizens have heard, the track of this storm is still, it's variable. And if it shifts to the west, it could cause tremendous damage in our community. So we shouldn't take it too lightly. Obviously, I'm new to the area, a new county manager. I will say, one thing that has kept me calm through all of this is the staff that I've got behind me. They've all been through it several times, and they're very confident and very capable. So I'm very appreciative of their help. The only other thing that I would let folks know is that we will be activating the EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, tomorrow at 1 o'clock. And from there, that, that group of people will be either on-call or in the building 24 hours a day until we get through the event. Not just the storm, but through the cleanup and everything. And we have activated, just so that the board is aware, a debris site. I'll get more information about that and push that out to the board and let the public know about that as well. So that as debris management becomes an issue, we're ready to move on that for cleanups.
Is all the website note that will be posted on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I did skip over public comment this evening. I didn't have anyone signed up. I only have one person in the audience that might like to speak, who's interested in saying anything at public comment this evening? Nothing? Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. PB 19-13, Keratuck County, text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration, Chapter 6, Subdivision and Infrastructure Improvements, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurements to Limit Minor Subdivisions to Those Without Significant Infrastructure Improvements, i.e. Road Installed to NC DOT Standards, Fire Hydrants, and Fire Ponds. It will also limit minor subdivisions from striping out along existing NC DOT-maintained roads. This text amendment does not apply to family subdivisions, a type of minor subdivision. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lucicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The text amendment you have before you tonight, it does address minor subdivisions. And let me explain, minor subdivisions are those of five lots or fewer that are along an existing road and do not require major infrastructure, such as a fire hydrant. At the January retreat this year, the board directed staff to address the use of these minor subdivisions, especially along some existing roads that we're seeing a lot of new development along. There are also an interpretation in our fire code that requires three or more lots, subdivision, three or more lots, to meet fire safety standards. That would include a road built to be able to hold a fire truck, fire hydrants, water lines, and fire hydrants, and fire ponds going in. This additional level of infrastructure, staff felt like it needed an additional review by our technical review committee. This text amendment's also going to bring our minor subdivisions into compliance with the general statutes regarding the division of land for an estate or probated will. So we've added some additional definitions. Connecting street, a dead-end street, a residential collector street, subdivision access street. All these are going to be added to Section 10 of the UDO. And we're also going to, in, for, street standards, for exempt subdivision, state that no more than one private access street shall meet the parent parcel as existed on April 2nd, 1989. So you're asking, why are we addressing, why are we worried about this? Well, this is an example that has come in over the last couple of months. This is Sunrise Estates that is taking place in Idlet. And this is Idlet Road coming in, and these are all existing, and there's Narrow Shore going to the north. This is Idlet Road. These are all existing DOT roads, and they're coming in and they're creating, I think, 17 or 18 new properties along existing NC DOT roads, which may not be that big a deal along these streets because they're dead-end roads. But we've also seen it happen on other, more highly-trafficked roads. Here's Baxter Lane. We're also seeing the minor subdivisions come in. The lighter green lots are the ones, are minor subdivisions that came in first. These are two minor subdivisions in anticipation of a major subdivision coming in here. And the reason for this is typically, you would want all these lots accessing an internal street. That's just usually have a better, higher quality of a development that way. You don't create a traffic issue on your existing roads by adding new accesses. Here's another one where the darker, the darker green are the, the minor subdivisions that came in. You could do five lots at a time along an existing road. And the teal color is the major subdivision. So all these, the green lots were done prior to a major subdivision coming in. Here's one along Toles Creek Road, where we do have access standards on Toles Creek Road, but these were done with two different minor subdivisions across the road from each other that could potentially create access issues with lots of driveway cuts along Toles Creek Road. And this is another one along East Ridge Road. So the lighter properties, the smaller ones, those are all minor subdivisions. And the dark green are the 10-plus acre exempt subdivisions. So let me go over what some of this does. It does a no-review subdivision. We've added to that so that it addresses the North Carolina General Statute to allow a no-review subdivision if you're settling in a state or a probated will. This does limit minor subdivisions to three or fewer lots, and these three or fewer lots would not require any new infrastructure. It sets a new standard for private access streets. They are now required to meet the fire code, so that would be 20 feet of road and 24 feet of right-of-way designated. It defines, this text amendment defines, annual average daily traffic, infrastructure, connecting street, dead-end street, residential collector street, and subdivision access street. So we presented this to the planning board, and they were concerned about that it could limit some development potential along existing NC DOT, right, NC DOT-maintained streets. So this is where there's two different versions of this text amendment in your packet. So staff's version was that there would be no new lots on existing NC DOT-maintained roads in the county. But the, the planning board felt that that was a little bit too limiting. So they limit minor subdivisions on NC DOT roads if the average annual daily traffic, daily trips are 500 trips or less, or there's a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour or less. So that's, there's lots of different language in, in your packet. But that's the gist, that is the main point of this minor subdivision text amendment. So staff does recommend approval of this, of this text amendment. And we believe it is, the request is consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan, Policy HN4, Keratuck County shall discourage all forms of housing from leapfrogging into the midst of farmland and rural areas, thereby eroding agricultural resource base of the county. Policy TR5, so as to preserve the traffic-moving function of the county's primary roads, minimize traffic accidents, and avoid landlocked and interior parcels. Keratuck County should discourage residential and commercial strip development along the county's primary roads. And Policy CA1, the important economic tourism and community image benefits of attractive functional major highway corridors through Keratuck County shall be recognized. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because a higher level of review is required for subdivisions installing significant infrastructure. Example, roads installed to NC DOT standards, fire hydrants, fire ponds. This type of subdivision must be reviewed by the technical review committee and not administratively approved by the planning director alone. Limit, this limits driveway cuts along existing roads, preserves the traffic function of the road, and minimizes traffic accidents. And to have a higher quality development, it is important to mandate internal streets at more than two lots. So with that, I will take any questions that the board may have.
Anything that you, can you back up to a couple of the examples you decided? Are any of these current, are these on 25 mile an hour roads? I'm just interested to see the difference. Do you know, probably kept.
This is East Ridge Road, so this is not 25 miles an hour.
That's not 25, but that's not a high-traffic road neither.
Right.
Yeah. One, an example here may be Baxter Lane. I'm not sure what is, is it 35?
Baxter Lane, I mean, Baxter Lanes with the connectivity, I mean, they can enter it from Baxter Lane. They can enter it from Myakland. That one's kind of unique. It surprised me that the annual, but it was the average annual daily traffic was the lowest one of all of them because.
Baxter.
Not much out there.
But can't the speed limit change, though? It's not a constant. I mean, that speed limit sign could be changed.
Well, that's, nah.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, speed limit signs could be changed. So it could change the developments aspect then. I mean, that's the only thing I'm concerned about, because I mean, you may have 45 one time, now it'll be dropped down to 25, and somebody's planning on doing something, or, I mean, it just, it could change and change.
East Ridge has some spots where it's slower, but it's not 25. It's improved. Yeah.
If you're 25, you're probably not going to go up, right? Speed limits.
If you're 45, you could go down.
Well, it could go down. Well, proximity of houses, a lot of times affects speed limits, does it not, to the road, how close you are to the road, that kind of thing? So are you guys, was planning staff okay with the planning board's recommendation, or would you rather see your version of it? I guess this is a big question of the day. So what's your drawback on the?
What's, what is the problem with having the 25 mile an hour speed limit or the 500 average daily traffic? or the 500 average daily traffic?
Well, ideally, in the situation that's here, on this situation, it would have been better if this had been done with internal streets instead of creating lots along an existing DOT, along existing roads. It's just a little bit, not as high-quality development as we would have if they, it would have been brought in and a better lot arrangement. So in that vein, the planning staff would like to see, you know, no more situations like this. And this is an extreme case because there were so many, this property was surrounded by four NC, you know, this isn't, this is a.
DOT, as, you know, on the ARPO, DOT discourages, they call them curb cuts. You know, the less times that there is a driveway, it is, it's, I think, it proves to be safer if there's only, you know, access points.
So why would we make an exception, then? If it's a safety issue, why make an exception?
I think it's because it's not a very heavily traveled road with the 500 trips.
But couldn't that change? I mean, couldn't that change if subdivisions?
Could.
It, it could, but the layout of our county, we do have, just, especially when you get into, to lower Currituck, you're very limited by the topography. I mean, you're very limited, you're going out to the sound essentially. So there are a significant number of dead end streets or streets that loop around and have, don't carry some of the traffic that we're seeing in some of the Moyoc arterials and street, and collectors. So I understand the planning board wanting to still have that option available for development on these lower traffic roads and with lower ADTs and lower speed limits.
Was there one for Narrow Shore's Road? Was there an ADT for Narrow Shore's? I don't remember seeing that up there. I was just curious. Narrow Shore's Road, I see Macedon.
Is that the one up in Idlet?
Yeah, the one in Idlet. Because, I mean, Narrow Shore's Road is not a heavily trafficked road.
It's not a dead end down there.
Mm-hmm. But there are several, like 15 to 30 lot subdivisions up there off of there, north of, north of where this is taking place.
Well, so I think one of the takeaways from you that I'm getting, one of the bigger takeaways is that if we have a single cut, obviously there's a safety issue, but it's going to inspire a better product, give you turned out, basically.
Yes.
And thereby raise property values, et cetera.
Yep.
Laurie, will you go back to the subdivision? I guess it was the one on Baxter Station. The other issue that we heard from the board in January is something, with this example, essentially that minor subdivision should have been incorporated into the entire subdivision. So it was more, more of a holistic project. Instead, you quickly try to chop out five lots at a time by sticking them on a road that already exists, you can sell those five lots. In some cases.
Go back to East Ridge.
It creates the capital to do the rest of the project, but.
Look at how many cuts are in there.
Yeah.
And that's in, like, a quarter mile.
Yeah. And Commissioner Beaumont is right, that the more curb cuts you have increases the chance for people to back out into the road.
Mark the tape. Right, it's rare, you can go.
Yes, sir. It, it, it has a lot of negative impacts on a road. Not only does it, not only is it a safety issue, but it also causes more congestion on a road, the more curb cuts that you have. It's from a, a traffic engineer, which can get up here and explain that in a lot more detail than I can, so.
Some ones could basically, if they own, say, 50 acres, just go a five lot subdivision, jump up in here and do another, and jump up here and do another, correct?
Yes.
That's what you were seeing, we were seeing that happen.
That's what we were seeing happen, mm-hmm.
They were beating the system.
This one along Toles Creek, where they're facing each other along Toles Creek, the lighter, the lighter green is, are two minor subdivisions that are facing each other.
New TVs are so big, I can't, what's one of them? I mean, it's so big, I'm used to squirming.
Right, right, I can't see what I'm saying.
These four.
That's right, yeah, I know, okay, I know where, where it's like the, well, I always relate to numbers. It's like the 2,000 block of Toles Creek Road.
Okay.
That's the cop, that's the cop part coming up. I got, yeah, I know where you're talking about, because the, the ones to the right are the bigger lots that back up to the woods, and just a little bit further north of that is Launchland and Road and all that good stuff.
Yes.
Okay.
I couldn't tell what one it was. But now, the, the study on Baxter, that said 260 average annual daily trips a day, but I mean, that was done in 2014. And like I said, I know sometimes, and I do this all the time, too, when we're working for the Sheriff's Department, we'll cut down Moyoc Land and Drive, and you can cut it, there's so many cut-throughs, you can cut down by the, off of Shingle Land and Road and get to Baxter. I mean, there's so many, there's.
That was the point of interconnectivity.
Is that maybe what factor that in? Because I know, well, some of those weren't even there then. So that was done in 2014.
It was in 2014.
That's all, that's all that's going up and down.
There's a traffic generator, and when we talked about this in one of our other meetings, previous meetings, but a single-family home essentially generates, I think the, the rule of thumb is like nine and a half trips a day, and then you count going out and coming back in. So if you have, you know, a couple, a family that, the husband goes out, that's one trip out, and the wife goes out to work or whatever, and so each trip, so it's nine and a half trips a day, you soccer practice out and in, and all of a sudden you're at six. So Baxter Lane, I guess, maybe some of those houses weren't built there in 2014, which is why we're at such a 260.
Lowest number.
Mm-hmm.
It was interconnectivity, I believe, through the one part, because of the, the neighborhood that Ryan Holmesville wasn't there then.
Right.
I run radar on Brumsey Road, and I live on Brumsey Road. Seven, 10 a day is just, it's kind of high, but I mean, like I said, I mean, they could have done it in the summer of 2017 or something.
Okay.
I got a question, Laurie, just regarding the, the fire code. I know we're, there's requirements for fire hydrants and, on occasions, ponds. Is there a case where if, if approved shuttling, water shuttling is approved, could that, could that take the place of, let's say, a, a fire pond? If, if it's approved and it's been, I.
Well, I'll start it, and then.
I just.
There, for single-family homes, there's a certain number of, a fire flow number that you have to meet by, by the building code. And you can get that with having a fire pond on the property or potentially shuttling if that's the preferred method.
So.
Okay, well, because I've been asked that question a few times, I want to ask about it again.
Sure, sure. So can you, if you, can you meet it that way? Yes. Is it ideal to meet it that way? We're not sure. In order for that to happen, the fire department has to be certified by the Department of Insurance to shuttle water at a certain amount of water. Crawford Fire Department, for instance, has that. Right now, the system we have in place requires the developer to bear the cost of providing water to their subdivision. If we went to shuttling, you, I haven't done the study, but you might need more apparatus, you might need manpower.
I'm not saying it's feasible, because you can't do it all over the place.
Yeah.
But if a certain situation.
But you'd have to do it in a, in a fire district as a whole. So either the whole fire district can do it, or none of the fire districts can do it.
Okay.
So the, and the issue for us as a county staff is before we would change our code to allow a lesser amount of fire flow that would be more likely to be covered through water shuttling, we would want all of the, for instance, mainland fire departments to be certified before we would make that change. So you could be talking about extra expense for apparatus, for instance, just to make that happen. I do believe one of the reasons Crawford is capable of that is they have a tanker that's 2,500 gallons, I think. So it makes a, a difference what size tanker.
I mean, Lower Currituck has a large tanker, too, yeah. But, but yeah, and I think with the, I think the way, I mean, the mutual aid helped, you know, with that.
Yeah, and so.
So, so the challenge with that is, that's the purpose of the Tanker Task Force, and that was heavily worked through with the FIAB amongst the departments to ensure that if that's a, if that's called out, that water is flowing, it, I mean, I want to say almost every tanker in the county responds to ensure, it doesn't matter where in the county it is, you're going to have tankers rolling in with, with a lot of water, so.
And so I'm not sure why Crawford decided to get certified.
They did it.
Not Moyoc or Lower Currituck.
They did it because of ISO. They wanted, they were looking for an ISO, and then they worked hard and they proved the concept, and away it went. That was the precursor to the Tanker Task Force, and I would argue that with mutual aid, that we've got that.
So the fire departments would have to request certification?
The certification, agreed. But why we would withhold Crawford's, you know, or the Crawford Fire District benefiting from what they went and out. In other words, your comment about until the entire mainland's certified, we don't do anything differently, I would suggest that that was the benefit of the volunteers in that district, that they pursued it, they executed it, and they, they got it done, so.
So I think, I think part of the issue is, right now, our code requires that you meet ISO standards. There is a lesser fire flow required under a different set of standards. And so if we went with that different set of standards and reduced the fire flow, it could potentially help development in Crawford if they didn't want to put a fire pond in. But then the question becomes, now all of a sudden, staff has got different development requirements in different parts of the county for that. And ultimately, and here's kind of the big takeaway, we're only talking about parcels that develop without water lines nearby, which are not, the bulk of the development that we see in Currituck County occurs within distant, within a distance that needs a fire hydrant.
And then I'm not saying we need to adjust our.
Yeah.
Our, our standards to let develop. I'm just saying, if, 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 if the Tanker Task Force can meet that requirement that's currently in place, you know, why isn't that an option, I guess?
It'd be up to the individual fire department. So first of all, the individual fire departments would have to get certified. Now, they may be able to use the Tanker Task Force to accomplish that. But the other issue is, we would need to make sure that their contract stipulated that they would shuttle water. Because if we have a subdivision that builds out without a fire pond, because we're depending on water shuttling from the fire departments, and then something changes in the fire department, the leadership or whatever, and they say, we don't want to shuttle water anymore.
But our county is covered with houses and subdivisions that don't have a fire pond and aren't accessible to, and, and, you know, an aspect of how we got here in the first place, I think, I have, I take issue with.
Okay.
You know, and I'm just saying, look throughout this state of North Carolina, and you're not going to have a fire pond. You're not going to have a water source, and they're still building houses.
So we, we questioned that as well, and so our chief building inspector reached out to the state, as well as our state house representative, reached out to the Department of the Fire, or Office of the Fire Marshal. And the response that Representative Hannig got was that, in fact, Currituck County is enforcing the code correctly, and the rest of the state is not. I mean, that, that, I mean, that's basically what the email said.
Yeah, enforcing the code correctly, and that, that's true, I'm sure, but the other caveat to that, though, I mean, enforcing the code could be providing the proper shovel service when, when it can be.
I guess, I, I guess what I'm looking at is, if we're the only, if we're one of nine, if we're one of 100 counties that are, have gone to this, it's, there's a problem in the state.
The Office of State Fire Marshal did say there were other counties doing it. I just don't think they're necessarily in, in our region.
Can I have, the, when you said, it said in the sentence, I can't remember which page, but I wrote this down, they have to have hydrants and ponds. Is it and/or, or both?
Or.
Okay.
Either/or.
Either/or. The other thing, like you said, and I know recently, on the south end of the county, we had a fire, and the fire pond.
Was dry.
Was bone dry. So I mean.
And they had to have shuttles.
And they had to have shuttling, and, you know, I mean, like I said, so.
Part of that problem, if I recall.
That's older.
We're not, well, they probably didn't build the ponds.
It was an older subdivision, it wasn't a very big.
You know, ultimately, our goal is just to make sure that we've got the water to fight a fire. I have, like I said, as, as county manager, I have no problem with shuttling as a solution. We just need the fire departments to get, they have to be certified through DOI.
And that's all, that's all I was asking with this, is, is if, 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 if that can be done by shuttling, I mean, that's, to me, that should be acceptable, I would think.
But Ben, didn't you tell me when we met about this issue, that that is going to take a while? It's not like that's a solution for tomorrow, correct?
That's correct.
It's a lengthy process to do this.
Correct.
So if we change it, it's going to be a good length of time before we are able to do that.
That, that's correct, because first of all, you would need, you would have to have the departments to get certified, the shuttle. We would also need language in the contracts that would guarantee that they would shuttle, because like I said, we wouldn't want something to change in the department and that not be a contractual obligation, then we don't have water to fight a fire.
And that's, I just, I know Lower Currituck, I mean, a part of it down there, I mean, we do practicing shuttles.
Yeah.
I know Crawford does, too. I mean, anytime that I've responded to assist fire, we always have plenty of water. But I mean, just saying that, I mean, there's always, that's not, never been a problem.
Yeah. So there is a path forward so that we could not require on fire ponds, but it's probably a process that would take, I mean, the, the contracts right now, I think, are in place for a couple more years. So unless we wanted to go try to amend fire contracts mid-year, then it's something that we would, we'd have to address when the contracts come up for renewal.
You said that the fire department, the fire department in Raleigh had said that we were in compliance with what we were doing. And it's been mentioned, well, others aren't in the state. Well, that doesn't matter to me. If we're doing something that's supposed to be done to protect the citizens, we should do it. It doesn't matter if nobody else in the state's doing it.
Yeah, and, and don't misunderstand me, I didn't say take anything away. We can just add another piece to this to make it even better.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, I think, our goal is just to make sure that the, the water is provided.
And the ability to fight the fire.
Yep.
Yeah. But there's, there's a path forward for that, but it won't be a quick process, necessarily.
And if they all get certified, they can come back and change the order.
Yeah, I mean, if all the fire departments were certified and it was in the contract, actually, staff could, would probably champion an ordinance that would make some changes that would let that happen.
We have a volunteer fire department system in the mainland. And it's great that they can, that they do what they get done. And I'm certainly not suggesting that just because we're the only ones enforcing, that everybody else is causing risk or causing whatever. I think ironic to me that the same group that has this policy won't allow us to require sprinkler systems in 23-bedroom houses in the Outer Banks. So I am under no misconceptions that there's something else going on behind the scenes. We've been building houses like this for eternity, and, well, not eternity in the county. And so there's something else afoot. I don't believe that your house is any less protected by a fire pond or not, because at the end of the day, if the volunteers don't show up, I don't care how much water you have, your house is going to burn to the ground. And that's just the risk that you accept when you move into a rural community served by volunteers that do the best that they can with what they're able to, what they're provided. What I'm trying, what I am concerned about is, you know, and we've had all kinds of property right discussions, you know, you want to put in a five lots, and I understand, five lot here, five lot here, five lot here. I am not in favor of that whatsoever. But if you've got a simple five lot subdivision going in, and you're required to then take, because those are typically one acre, you know, five one-acre parcels, to then say you're going to have to drop a fire pond in, technically, is it part of the subdivision? Or is it each house going to have to be required and responsible for providing their own water? I, I'm not impressed with this requirement, and I made that abundantly clear on multiple occasions with you. In talking with, with Chief, he, too, has a conceptual issue with what we're trying to accomplish here. So I think the solution is water shuttle, but going back, nothing is ever a guarantee, you know? We had a, we had a house that caught fire that plugged into the fire, into a fire hydrant, and we sprayed 105,000 gallons of water on the house, and the house still burned to the ground. Water is not the only, that's not the fix-all. And so if, if that's the, if that's the aspect that we're focusing on, I think, I think it's, it's not legitimate, it's not really.
But is that what this is focusing on? Is that what this is focusing on?
I'm sorry?
No, I think, that's, I was thinking.
But that's not what this is focusing on, though, right? This is focusing.
This is clarifying what a problem has been, that has reared its head because of these minor subdivisions, right? We found out that we needed to be enforcing, or we were, and it, and it's just raised some concerns, so at this point, I guess we're just, we're codifying it really and saying, you have to have this now, and we're, we're letting people know going forward.
We're putting in the UDO what is in the fire code. We're putting in the UDO what is in the fire code.
Right.
Is what's going on.
Right, so that's there for everyone to see. And so, yes, to your point, that's not, the main point is to change these minor subdivisions, and in doing so, bring to light fire code. Which I don't think any of us, I think we all are in agreement that shuttling works just, has worked just fine. And it's, and so, we would need to change the UDO to allow for, to change our, the standard, is that what you're saying?
So essentially, if fire, if water shuttling is the path we want to go to satisfy the state requirement, which is, which is.
No, no, I don't give a, not to change it, I would not take something and put this in place of it, just add another means.
Well, that's what he's saying.
That's what he's saying.
Oh, I thought you were saying take something.
Water shuttling, fire pond, or fire hydrant system.
Anywhere.
And I think, and that's where I.
Yeah, to offer that as an option, to meet the state requirement, we would need the fire departments to be certified. I think from a staff perspective, we would recommend having that in the fire contract.
We have, we have percentages of performance criteria as part of that contract.
And then, finally, then we would come through, we'd have to amend not this section of the UDO, this might be part of it, but there are other sections of the UDO that would have to be amended, because right now, we recognize ISO standards, and we'd have to go with NFPA. I think I got that acronym right, but my acronyms are jumbled a little, so. But, so there's a, there's a process forward, but the first step would be getting, so let's say we took Crawford, let's say we've got one that's already certified, and we're comfortable that their contract requires that they shuttle water if needed. And I'm not saying that I am right now, I'd have to look more in depth into it. Then you'd have to go through and amend the UDO, but you'd have to amend the UDO to state that only districts who have that certification and have language in the contract guaranteeing it, so forth.
You can't guarantee it. You can't guarantee that a fire pond's going to work, you can't guarantee that there's going to be enough fire and water in the tower.
That it is an expected response, is that a better?
Their response, I would suggest, because having worked that contract, there is a percentage of, you got to respond, 75% of the time, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. All we have to do, I would suggest, is add water shuttling as part of that response, which they would consider that's part of their normal response. It's not a 100% guarantee, it's not.
And so that process can happen, for sure. I think that we're, we're losing focus a little bit on a separate issue, and that's something that staff can definitely move forward with, but the amendment before you tonight is not just about the.
The water, I understand, no, I understand, I was just, when I was looking at this, I wanted to bring it up, as in a, make it known that going forward, we need to look at that as an option to meet our fire requirements for developments. Not, not that this changes anything that we're focused on right now, I understand what we're trying to get accomplished, I just wanted to bring it up. I had numerous people call me about it, why isn't it an option, something staff can probably look into?
Yep. And we have been looking into it, because we've heard those same concerns and complaints.
Sorry, just to clarify, this language says, if you have to put that infrastructure in, the pond, the fire hydrant, that you just have to go through our technical review committee process, because it's something that, that maybe the fire departments would need to weigh in on, or chief building inspector, it would take through the whole committee and not just leave it up to planning staff to approve. If you have to put that level of infrastructure in, it'll kick you into just a higher level of review.
Speaking of the chief building inspector, you got him right, he just came in.
Well, like I said, I don't want to lose focus of what the amendment's about tonight, So the question before the board is, we've got these two different versions of this text amendment. One of them, which the staff put together, that states, you have to go through that process that Laurie just laid out, if you were going to access anything, any currently state-maintained road, any currently state, yeah. The planning board version, that has the 500 trips a day and 24 miles per hour, did I get that right, Laurie, or did I get it wrong?
Yes, 500 average annual daily trips, or the 25 miles an hour.
So.
Okay, so have we had enough discussion with?
Yeah.
Shuttling, yeah. All right.
And one more, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, one more thing that staff would recommend, delayed effective date on this, so that any projects that people may have in the works, 60 to potentially 90 days, they could shore those up and get them into, into staff and us review them. So a delayed effective date would be another staff recommendation.
First through the year.
First through the year. All right, thank you, Mr. Cicero, Mr. Stackletter. At this time, I will open.
If I can just make one point, with the extended timeframe, the only concern that staff would have is that if you set a timeframe of 90 days, you're going to have a whole bunch of applications come in in 90 days. So you could, if there's a project out there, you could set it so that as long as they make application within a certain period of time, within the next, you know, 30 days or whatever, I mean, that's the only concern that we would have with that extended time. But anyway, just, that's just something to think about.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I will open the public comment. Do you not have anyone signed up? Would you like to make a comment this evening, sir?
I didn't actually come to speak on this issue, but I thought.
We'll need your name and all that good stuff.
I'm Mark Bisell, and I'm at 3512 Protown Highway in Kitty Hawk. I just wanted to mention that the planning board thought that, and the reason they suggested some amendments, is they thought it was overly restrictive. And one example that was discussed was if there is an existing subdivision that has a residual parcel in it, where a developer could potentially develop one or two more lots on an existing subdivision road, he would be prohibited from doing that if NC DOT had already taken that road over. And it may not make sense to build a new road off of that existing subdivision road to try to serve one or two more lots that happened to front on that road. So it seemed like there should be exceptions that would be allowed to just, you can't put any lots on a DOT road.
Even though the subdivision's been platted?
Yes.
But that's a subdivision, that's not.
If the developer still owned that road and hadn't dedicated, DOT hadn't accepted it for maintenance, then he would be able to do it, but if he, but you have essentially the same situation, if DOT happens to have accepted that road for maintenance, so this would prohibit another lot from fronting on that road.
Laurie, just for clarification, does it say that you can't do it, or it has to go through a different process?
You would have to go through a different process.
It's not disallowing you the ability to do it, it just says you have to go through more steps to make it happen.
For this, if he, if, and I can, it may take me a minute, but I can pull the example specifically that Mr. Bisell is referring to, but we would like to see that as part of a phased development, or a complete subdivision in front of us, and know that once DOT takes over the first property, it would be the second, the second phase would then could go. But Mr. Bisell was specifically talking about Office Sanderson Court.
Let me, just, can we go back to, let's look at the one you had on Baxter Lane, for example. Let's say that there was a vacant parcel between Arrowhead and Little Acorn, somewhere on, in that existing Little Acorn Road. Let's say there was a residual parcel, Little Acorn.
Between Little Acorn and Arrowhead.
There you go.
Like right here?
Let's say one of the, one or two of those lots hadn't been developed, for whatever reason. Let's say there was a different property owner, and that wasn't part of the subdivision, and now, all of a sudden, that property became available to this developer, and he was, wanted to purchase what could be one or two of those lots internally to that subdivision. Would he be able to develop those without building an additional road?
Would the property owner only be given approval to run the road across his property, for one?
Right, and like in Little Acorn, you'd extend the stub to encompass those new lots, and.
No, he's actually saying, on Little Acorn, two of those lots weren't part of that subdivision.
Say two of those lots then exist now, because they're owned by someone else.
And then all of a sudden, now they are.
Right.
I believe the language.
They are part of the subdivision.
The language would allow you to do that, but you'd have to go through the process. It wouldn't be a minor subdivision process at that point.
It would be a major subdivision.
Correct. So it's not disallowing it, it's just saying that it has to go through more review.
And we would rather the cuts occur in a subdivision than, you're not, you're not cutting on a main road, main artery.
So the 25 mile an hour speed limit, I mean, that's not really, I don't even see the purpose, because you're still cutting, you're still cutting into main roads, and if it's already platted as a subdivision, and there's a road in the subdivision, there's still a process to add to it, am I correct?
Correct.
I just want to make sure.
I believe in no many roads in the county where we have a 25 mile per hour speed limit, I was sitting here trying to think.
Well, and we're back to, this is the, this is the extreme case where we have these four, yeah, four DOT-maintained roads, and they've gone in and created 17 new lots, 17 or 18 new lots along here, where they, you do, I mean, this is a dead end, if you're going to do this, this is the place to do it. However, it still would be better if you brought the street into it, had a little bit better lot design, but this is currently allowed under our ordinance, so.
One other issue that comes up with safety, and this is, it's not the big point, but it is a point, is school bus routes. And so if that, if that subdivision had internal streets, then all of a sudden, the school bus stops internally. Right now, with the way that's laid out, if there's a kid at each couple of houses, the school bus is stopping all the way down.
They stop on Guinea Road about 11 times, it just, you know, because it's a high-traffic road, I don't think.
Not saying that that's a major issue, but I mean, those are the kinds of things that when Laurie, Ms. LaCicero's talking about internal streets, it makes some difference, so.
And I think that makes good sense, but going back to the example that I was hypothetically referring to, the.
What are you cooking, Mark?
You're just, you're saying that what I'm, the situation that I described could be approved, that would just take a board approval rather than a staff approval, is that correct?
It's going to be a major subdivision at that point.
Yes, I believe that's correct, from the staff perspective.
Yes.
Which the, what was expressed to us at the planning retreat, was that the board wanted to see more of these smaller subdivisions because of what was happening with curb cuts and so forth on, on some of these roads.
And I would venture to say, if we see less of this because of the changes, we probably would, at some point, revert it back to the staff and not have it come to us as frequently decreasing our workload, but that's for future boards to figure out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right. See no one else in the audience for public comment, I will close public comment. And more discussion from the board on this? I'll open the floor for a motion.
I was going to suggest a motion to, I mean, it might be shot down, but, sorry. I was going to suggest a motion to continue this till Commissioner Etheridge was here to our next, since we didn't have a lot on the agenda tonight, but.
Will this continue?
No.
No, that's the next item, old business.
I know we discussed this, and I know that some of the miners were abused, and I agree with that, but some of the fire stuff, like what we talked about, the different things, but either or, I mean, if I don't have the support for it, we'll vote on it.
Were you making a motion?
I was making a motion to continue it, just because, like I said, I mean, this one's, I know I read this yesterday, but I was also thinking about all the different things I had to do for the hurricane, so didn't put a lot of thought into it.
Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Anyone else like to proffer a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve PB 1913, as the staff has written, because the request is consistent with the land use plan. It discourages subdivisions from leapfrogging into the midst of farmland and rural areas as this erodes the agricultural resource base of the county. It preserves the traffic moving function of the county's primary roads, minimizes traffic accidents, and avoids land-locking interior land parcels with strip residential development on the county's mainland roads, which allows more steady traffic and minimizes traffic accidents from excessive driveway cuts and usage. And it provides for more functional highway corridors by limiting the number of driveway, driveway accesses along those corridors. And it is reasonable and in the public interest, because the fire code standards apply to minor subdivisions that create two more lots, except family subdivisions, additional infrastructure is required. It is necessary for more departments and agencies to review the subdivision request, since the subdivision can no longer be administratively approved by the planning, planner-director. A full technical review committee review is necessary, just as major subdivisions are reviewed. And it is logical to review, to require a full TRC review of subdivisions installing infrastructure and limiting excess driveway cuts along existing roads to create an orderly development pattern.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, carries unanimously. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is old business. Item A, consideration of an ordinance, amending Article 1, Chapter 13, and Article 2, Chapter 13 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to provide for the time, for the time water and sewer service is committed to a service applicant. That, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, this ordinance is back before the board for its second reading, having passed its first reading at your last meeting by a majority vote, but under state law, requires a return for a second reading, because there was not a full membership of the board in attendance at the last meeting. Tonight, it may be adopted by a simple majority vote. As we explained at the last meeting, this ordinance is an amendment to our water and wastewater ordinances, and specifically, the time within which or at which a system development fee must be paid by an individual who has subdivided property or is otherwise developing property. So the ordinance on page two, at line 14, defines what a system development fee is. It was formerly, I guess, known or considered to be what we knew as an impact fee. The General Assembly and the last year or so amended state law to limit or provide specifically the manner in which a county or city may impose a system development fee to charge assessments for impacts to water and sewer or other utility systems. So this ordinance, first of all, will provide, within the water section of our utility ordinance, a definition for system development fee, which comes from the state law. It then provides, in Part II of the ordinance, amending Section 13-10, to provide the time when the system development fee for water must be paid, and provides that the system development fee shall be paid at the time of application for a building permit or site plan approval. This was, this was to address and in response to a concern from the development community in the county, that they not be required to pay, as state law appeared to require, payment of the system development fee at the time that water was obligated, or at the time that a final plat was recorded, whichever came first. So this gives them some relief and allows for them to pay for the system development fee for water at the time that they make application for the building permit, which of course is usually sometime after final recordation of a plat. Continuing on to page five, this is the wastewater section of our utilities ordinance. It again adds a system development fee definition. And then with regard to wastewater, it does provide that if the new development involves the subdivision of land, the system development fee shall be assessed when the final plat is recorded. The county believes, county staff believes that we have sufficient water resources and assets that we could meet an obligation for water, if system development fee is paid for at the time a building permit is applied for. However, wastewater is a little bit different, and thus, the requirement that a system development be, fee be paid at an earlier phase of the development. be, fee be paid at an earlier phase of the development than it would be the case with water. As I stated at the last meeting when this was presented, this comes with some caution, because there, there may be some eventuality where a developer has a subdivision with a number of lots left, or people have bought lots and have not yet applied for a building permit, and for some reason, the county not have the ability to provide water for development of that particular lot at the time. I don't think we believe that would happen, but it is a possible consequence of changing payment of a system development fee and, and receiving an obligation to provide water at a later stage in development than what state law appeared earlier require, and under which the county was proceeding prior to receiving concerns from the development community.
Glad to answer any questions. Any questions for Mr. McCree? Thank you, sir. Having none, I will open the floor for a motion.
I move to approve the ordinance amending Article 1, Chapter 13, and Article 2, Chapter 13 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to provide for the time water and sewer service is committed to a, to a service applicant.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none carries unanimously. Next item, new business. A, board appointments. Number one, Carova Beach Road Service District Advisory. This is to appoint two new people. And at this time, I will move to appoint the individuals as presented by staff.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none carries unanimously. Next item, Ocean Sands, North Crown Point Watershed District Advisory. Again, I will move to appoint the individuals as presented by staff.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, B, consent agenda. For a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I will open the special meeting of the Tours and Development Authority, and we have TDA budget amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first budget amendment before you tonight with the TDA is to increase the appropriations for temporary restrooms to serve historic Corolla Park and the lighthouse during the construction of the boat museum, maritime museum, which will include public restrooms. We're required under contract to provide restrooms on the lighthouse grounds or in the facility. This would essentially take money that is recognized from occupancy tax and allow us to spend it for that purpose.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, I will move to approve the budget amendment. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and...
The final budget amendment under TDA is to recognize some interest earnings that we had, and we'll use that to cover the, some increased cost for credit card processing fees, insurance and bonds, and software licensing fees above and beyond what we budgeted for.
Thank you. Need to approve?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all. Can we have a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the Tours and Development Authority?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, Ms. Kitty. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Be safe. We'll see you again in a couple weeks.